Agenda. First item is a continued public hearing for 23 to 31 Bridge Street, Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016-12, continued for my December 14, 2016 meeting. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Evan Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Boston Property Development, LLC. Tonight, I'm joined by Peter McLaughlin, who's the Principal of Boston Property, along with Chris Greenwood and John Hanson, Hanson's Boston Property, Rob Del Savio from M-Box Studios, who will make a presentation on the revisions that we've made to the architectural plans since the last meeting, and Jim Burke from DeSalle Burke Engineering, the site engineer, who will talk about how we've -- the changes that we've made to the design of this, the drainage design, which is significant in itself. As you know, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a continuing hearing. We started this process in August of 2016. I think our first hearing before this board was in September, and this has been continued a number of times since then, and we've done quite a bit of work. I can say this development team has been fantastic in responding to the comments and concerns that have been raised by the departments, by the planning department, and by peer review engineers, and worked diligently with each of those agencies, as well as working closely with Mary Ann Peake, who I know is here from the National Park Service, who I know has very great concerns that be addressed, and has also reached out to the MBTA. So, just to kind of reiterate, and then what I'm going to do, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is then turn it over to Rob and Jim to talk about the revisions that we've made. Last time you were before this board, a number of concerns were raised by the members. One being that the National Park Service's concerns that were expressed by Mary Ann Peake be addressed. Everybody expressed concern that the national historic treasure in the city be protected and that there be no negative impact on that treasure, and we agreed wholeheartedly with that. In addition to that, the board also talked about because of the close proximity of the site to the MBTA red line, that there were concerns raised to ensure that the MBTA was on board and comfortable that the development would not have a negative impact on their operation of the line. And then other concerns that were raised by the neighbors regarding density and traffic and things of those nature. Because items at the time, at the September hearing and then later at the October hearing, were still outstanding relative to the comments from the Fields and Thomas, who's representative here tonight, and also regarding traffic, who's the peer review representative here as well tonight. Since that time, I can say to you that there have been diligent efforts, as I said at the beginning, with all of the departments to address all the comments and concerns that were raised, and we believe that we've gotten to a point, and I know that Mr. Stevens will present to you his findings, that we've addressed the comments and concerns of all of the department heads and all of the peer review consultants. But in addition to that, we -- the team spent numerous meetings with Mary Ann Peake and the National Park Service to walk their site, to understand the concerns of the National Park Service. In fact, we went even further and reached out to the Hospital Hill Association and went to a meeting that was asked of us to attend at the Hospital Hill Association, where it was again expressed by them that we also address and make -- and ensure that the National Park Service is comfortable with the revisions to the plans. And I can say to you that as a result of those meetings, there were numerous changes to the plans that you'll see tonight, even more than you'll see tonight, that Mary Ann Peake indicated in her letter to the body this evening and will be incorporated into the plan through our meeting with the Historic Commission, which we're meeting with on January 23rd. We've filed, and we've -- and any decision that this body makes or the zoning board in that matter, who decided on this matter last night, will be subject to the ultimate recommendations of the Historic Commission, in which all of the Mary Ann Peakes and the National Park Service's concerns will be addressed. In addition to that, we've also reached out and had numerous regular communication with the MBTA. The MBTA was providing the plans, there's been discussion with the MBTA. They requested and required that the applicant file for and apply for a permit before any construction take place, and we're confident that they are also comfortable with the issuance of that permit, that this will be -- this development will not have a negative impact on the MBTA line and the operation, and they will be part of the construction process in that they'll have supervisory role in making sure that whatever's being done in the ultimate construction will not impact the red line. As we know, I'm sure many of -- even some of our members here utilize the red line on a regular basis and for transportation, and there can't be any impact on that. So, we're very confident and comfortable that we've gotten to a point that we can -- this matter can move forward to fruition. Last night, we appeared before the zoning board of appeals on our request for conventional relief and reported to the board like we are tonight, and they voted to approve this project last night. We will appear before the Historic Commission, as I said, on January 23rd, and follow up with the National -- the Affordable Housing Board as well to comply with the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Order in that respect. So, without anything further from me alone, I'm here to answer any questions and respond to any comments that the board may have. I'd like to turn it over to Rob Del Savio from M-Box Studios to kind of walk you through the architectural plans, and then Jim Burke to talk about the significant changes in the drainage. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I'm Rob Del Savio from M-Box Studio. Just to orient everybody to the site, it's circled and red here, it's Newport Avenue, Bridge Street, snakes down the hill here, back down to Hancock, and as you can see here, that's the MBTA rail lines that are cutting along that side of the site. Slightly enlarged view, you can see the proximity of the rail lines here are still about 30 feet back from the actual rail line itself, which will be plenty of bumper construct, and then Bridge Street snakes its way down here. Another view here. So, back in July, when we submitted the original drawings, we were basically a five-story building, and this is a view looking almost over the railroad tracks back towards the building. At that point, there's a lot of concern about the height of the building and its view, especially from the Park Service property. Since that time, when we were five stories, we've gone back and we've cut the building down lower on this side, so now we're only four stories here of all of the building, stepping back to five, but once it steps back, almost 30 feet from the edge. So, we've cut a lot of the mass of the building away from that side, from the most critical view of the building, and basically what's highlighted in red there is what's been removed. So, this is the view of the building back from July, when we did a sort of a composition of the existing building as seen from the Park Service site, realized that it was too big, and we tried to see what we could do to get rid of that top floor. And in the next view, we worked with the Park Service, we did some views back further from the historical buildings, and this is the section of the building that we've got rid of here. So, there is a piece that's still poking up, but it's pretty much shielded from the trees, and it's been minimized quite a bit how much were actually sticking above the tree line. And -- parking wise, it's basically the way we had it back in July. We've eliminated half a level of subterranean parking and picked up a few of those parking spaces at grade level. Our parking count is onsite is 83 spaces for the 90 units, plus we have seven spaces across the street, so we're a ratio of 1.5 spaces per zone. The upper floors of the building have basically remained the same, we still have 60 units throughout the property. And then again, here you can see on the top floor, have we got rid of about 3,000 square feet by cutting the building, the fifth floor of the building back, so we're getting up from that facade. This is the lunar package as well, since it's a closed unit layout, so again, the units range from one bedrooms to two bedrooms. And again, a view of the top floor, where most of the -- all of the mechanical, from then up on the roof, is all shielded by the power of itself, so you won't see any of that from street level. And again, bulk of the building is kind of back far, pretty far back from your view from the National Park Service site. This is the view, this is a section through the building, and here again, a section that's been removed, as you view it from the Park Service site. And this is a good view, you can see even on this side, we've cut back a good chunk of the building, so you don't see that fifth floor sticking out, going from the Bridge Street perspective. And then again, a piece that's been removed from the site. So, Jim, can you take us through some of the civil engineering side?
Good evening. Jim Burke with DeSalle Burke and Associates, and we are the surveyor and cylinder director of this particular project. They're looking at the existing conditions here with the multiple buildings, multifamily homes with access off Bridge Street, with multiple parking. This is the location of the proposed new parking, the seven spaces. This driveway here, garage here, will be taken out and turned into a seven-place parking This area is basically the major change of the project that's right here. The drainage originally proposed was in this location, we're going to expand the system that was approved for 999 Hancock Street. Soils down here are, you know, I don't want to say marginal, but not as good as the soils up here. When we're building 999 Hancock Street, we got to observe the soil face along the side, and it was really a nice sandy gravel that is really susceptible to recharge for groundwater. So, we sat down with the town, with the city, and they requested restore entire 25-year volume, six inches of rainfall, over 24 hours for this roof, and it's considerable volume, that's about 50,000 gallons of storage right there. We have an overflow that for the 100-year storm event, that will go into a level spreader, more or less it's a 12-inch pipe perforated, perforations, one inch perforation, two feet on the center, which will, you know, mimic kind of a sheet flow, a lamper flow to prevent any sort of erosion coming across the site, heading towards Forest Brook. Everything else pretty much remained the same regards to utility feeds, the drainage for this driveway here remains the same. There's a seven-space parking lot, and that's also the change in the layout. Everything else pretty much remains the same as far as sewer connection and water connection. We talked to the city about that as well, the line and the buildings they will service, provide that -- the new services there. So, we'll be working with the engineering department as this, you know, moves flowing. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Questions from the board members?
A couple additional items, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify on the Historical Commission, although we're going to be before them on January 23rd, we hoped to be before them before this hearing and sought to be on their December agenda. Unfortunately, because of scheduling, the board decided not to have a December meeting, and therefore, since they only meet once a month, we moved to the January hearing. We will, however, follow up. I know, as I indicated, Ms. Peake addressed and raised concerns about continued dialogue on the design elements of the building relative to colors and material selection, and a lot of those things aren't -- haven't been decided upon, they've been discussed with the National Park Service, but they will be -- that discussion will continue, and it will be addressed in specific detail at the Historic Commission level, who is really, I think, whose jurisdiction is essentially colors and design elements of that nature, and I think they'll have quite a bit of input on that. The other thing I wanted to indicate about the parking elements, as well as we, as Rob Del Savio indicated, we have 1.5 spaces per unit, which is actually in accordance with Business C parking requirements, so we're consistent with the code, and we're meeting that requirement through the use of the seven parking spaces across the street, which will be provided by way of a lease arrangement at the owner of that property, who's also a Boston property entity. The interesting thing, and what I suggested to the department, is that that will be an ongoing lease arrangement depending on need, and it also is an opportunity to address other concerns about parking in the street by other users, i.e. interfaith social services, if that additional space is needed. And what it does provide clearly is clear visitor space, so when visitors do come to the facility, rather than needing to pull into the garage or even into the surface parking lot that's provided under the building, they'll have a clearly designated lot directly across the street that they'll be able to utilize. And when we raised that with the zoning board, they felt quite comfortable with that change and liked that change quite a bit, that it provided that clear designated space. Just to highlight the comments to the drainage, I think what's lost in that a little bit is that the Conservation Commission also acted on the drainage, when the drainage was going to be handled through the expansion of the system on 999 Hancock Street site, which is actually in close proximity to the Furnace Brook. And although the Conservation Commission was comfortable, we looked in to try to find other ways to address that on the site that we're dealing with here today. So, this redesign is really a significant change and improvement to the drainage elements. So, with that, we -- that's the applicant's presentation of the revisions. We're here to answer any questions.
Questions from the board members? I have two. One, did -- was there an order of conditions issued for this building by CONCON?
There was.
Okay.
There was, and in fact, initially, it was what -- when the initial design phase, and actually because of the significant revisions, we'll seek and speak with Mr. Duka to determine whether or not any additional action is necessary. I think what we'll find is that there's, since there's significantly less impact, there's probably no need to seek an amendment, although we will do so if necessary.
And my second question is, the number of units, is it still at 60?
It's still at 60. Yes.
All right, I'm going to -- it is a continued public hearing, so -- yeah, peer review, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, for the record, my name is Matt Cody, professional engineer with Fields and Thomas. We reviewed the project on behalf of the board back all the way from August, due to the significant review changes and design changes. We reviewed the project several times, we're very familiar with all the aspects and the iterations that have come to this point. As we issued a letter to the board just this week on Tuesday, essentially finalizing our review, at this point, we're comfortable with all the technical issues that have been raised, and we feel like they've been addressed adequately. There are, however, a handful of items that still kind of remain outstanding that are kind of more administrative in nature, and that can be potentially handled if the board deems appropriate by the conditions of approval. Some of those include this pending fire hydro testing that needs to be done in the area, and again, that'll all be coordinated through the DPW, submission of final landscape plans and other documents that we didn't necessarily receive, but we assume the board has, such as like the budget lists and green building documentation. There is a waiver before the board regarding the rear yard setback that still remains outstanding. The applicant is also proposing more groundwater and soil testing as the project progresses, and again, that would be something that'll be reviewed and documented during the building process. And there is also the resolution of this off-site parking that's been added, that has added some impervious area that necessarily hasn't been included in the stormwater management. We recognize that the, you know, impact is probably minimal, it's not a large area, but that hasn't been thoroughly addressed, and we again would defer that to like the building process and those approvals. But, like I said, in general, we're comfortable with the revisions that have been made, and available for any questions if you have any.
Questions from the board?
With tonight is also Jeff Derrick from the N-S Associates, who reviewed the -- was part of the peer review team regarding traffic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Derrick from the N-S Associates, who are your review consultant relative to traffic. And I think similar to what Matt had said, all of our outstanding questions have been answered. We have a letter that's dated December 12th that should be in your packet. It does list some items that we would suggest would be conditions of approval to the project, mostly relating to the access into the property itself. There was just a couple of things I wanted to highlight, and we looked at it from a traffic perspective, and I think what you've heard through the hearing process is a couple of concerns were related to on-street parking, and obviously the adequacy of the parking relating to the project itself. But as we look at those things, and we think about the off-site parking lot that's proposed, we think it's appropriate, but what you'll see is comments from city staff, as well as there's an importance of having safe pedestrian accommodations in this area here, so what you've seen asked through our review, as well through city staff review, is reconstruction of some of the wheelchair ramps in the area, making sure the sidewalks are accessible, and then if we look at the parking lot across the street, clearly we need a safe pedestrian connection so that that is functional as it relates to the project itself, so we've asked the applicant to make sure that we have those appropriate accommodations. So, that's all going to kind of fit hand in hand with, as you look at conditions, making sure that we've got safe sidewalks and pedestrian accommodations as well. And then with respect to the on-street parking, I think that city staff has also requested, as have we in our letter, that a parking management plan needs to take place in this area, the applicant should commit to doing that. That parking management plan should not only be after the project constructed, but what's happened in this area, as you're probably well aware of, is with the construction activity, it's resulted in construction worker parking on-street in this area. So, as this project gets constructed, we want to make sure that doesn't happen related to this development, the parking, this even to be on the site, and then I think most importantly, the public transportation and carpool needs to be used. On behalf of answering any questions, Jeff, but again, in our December letter, it's outlined kind of some of the conditions that you might want to set.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, it is a public -- continued public hearing, so ask anyone who wishes to speak, just to come up and identify yourself. Anyone wishing to speak?
I'll speak if no one else will.
Go ahead, Jeff.
John Rutherford, 14, Tresland Way. I just moved, I'm Ward 5 now, originally from 62 Grand Mall Road, also Ward 5, so I drive through that area often. One thing about the traffic setting, Thayer Street, cars park on one side of that, and when you come up Bridge Street, there's a do not enter, and you're forced to take a left onto Thayer Street. Thayer Street isn't wide enough for two-way traffic, so if this project is allowed to go through, it would only make sense to make Thayer Street a one-way, so it goes away from Bridge Street. You can't make it the other way, because cars wouldn't be able to leave the area. But that way, you're not going to have people cutting through the neighborhood, going down Adams Street, taking that left, and then going down by the Fowler House and taking that other left. At least when they're leaving, they'll have the option of either going down Bridge Street, or they can then go out that way and go to Adams or go whatever, but everyone that comes to that apartment place is going to have to go to Hancock, they're going to, you know, deal with the traffic that everyone else in the city has to deal with, okay? And, you know, you're going to have to fix that if you approve this. I think that according to the rules I've been coming to these meetings for over a year now, zoning approves this first. I wish there were some rules where they came to planning first, and planning had to approve something before zoning could approve something. But the way the city of Quincy works is if zoning approves something first, they approved it at 60 units, you can't even change that. So, you either have to approve this at 60 units or not approve it and have them come back. Zoning kind of tied your hands. Chairman Akins wasn't even at the meeting last night. There was another meeting at Central Middle School yesterday about the Fox Rock development, and they were talking about, you know, doing all this crazy stuff, and a taxpayer stood up, and she said that, you know, they don't say no to any projects, and they really don't. And this, if there's ever been a project to say no to, I'm for developing something there, lower, 30 units. Someone else wanted to build 30 units there, but, you know, it's your job to either stop this project, or it's your job to continue approving every single project that comes before you. They can come back with a better plan, which is better for the neighborhood, better for the taxpayers, and like I said, that Thayer Street, that parking issue, I challenge you right now to drive down there at any given time, if two cars come at each other, there's nothing you can do, it's going to be a bad problem. So, I honestly am shocked that they're still asking for 60 units. I mean, what concessions did they actually make? Okay, I mean, we asked them to work with the planning board, work with the neighborhood, work with the Adams Historic Site, work with, you know, the people that left that site for the people of Quincy to enjoy, it's the views that they're taking away from us. Those people up there, they're going to have the views down, and that's what's valuable. I mean, if this project does go through, you know, I might want to live on that top floor, you know, if the developer will let me, you know, but, I mean, the whole point is rents are very expensive right now in Quincy. I am, you know, I just moved to Quincy, I'm paying a lot of money for an apartment that I'm really not happy, you know, and it's, we're driving the rents up, and we're pushing people who grew up in the city away from the city, and you're basically building stuff for people that aren't from Quincy. You're building this for new yuppies or people from hipsters, I'm not sure who's going to live in that, you know, transit-oriented people. I mean, basically, I am in the process right now, I'm going to sell my Prius, because I have to sell my car to be able to afford to live in Quincy, and I'm going to start driving on these bike lanes that you made, that I have no idea how they were planned out, just as I have no idea who planned out that parking lot at the central school, because parking was unbelievable last night. So, say no, stand up for the taxpayers, stand up for the people of Quincy, show that you are truly an independent board, and that you are not a rubber stamp for the developers and not a rubber stamp for the mayor, because I have respect for the planning board, and I hope you will make the right decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak?
Anybody else in the audience? Go ahead. Hello, my name is Jonathan Setney, I live on Monroe Road. I don't know this gentleman, but you'd think I did because of what I have here. I actually drove on these streets and took some photographs as I drove on them. But I want to say initially, the developers of this project have really been wonderful. They did meet with the Hospital Home Neighborhood Association, I'm a member of that association. I know that they've met repeatedly with Mary Ann Peake to try to ameliorate some of her concerns. My position on this is the project is just totally inappropriate for the area. Great developers, great project, it's totally inappropriate. There's not enough space, the roads are not appropriate for the area. We're building a project for people who don't live in Quincy, people who are simply going to begin to demand that there be improvements in the area where the project is being built because they're going to have it be made. We're going to have to pay for those, the taxpayers of Quincy. We're paying increasing taxes, according to the mayor from one of Brad McPage's lectures, where our taxes are going up because the residential building is not apace with the commercial, it's way ahead of the commercial, so that pay composes a greater burden on us, for taxpayers. We're building for people who don't live in Quincy, we're building at a point in time where rentals are going down in terms of money, the rent rates, there was an article in the Globe this weekend, Boston rental rates going down, New York Times had an article, rents in New York are going down as well. We're building, and we're building, and we're building, I think Mary Ann Peake made the point last time, we're building these buildings, and they last. We're not just putting up a tent and inviting people to live there, and then if they don't next year, take it down. We're building these buildings and leaving them for the children of Quincy to look at for the rest of their lives. But moving on to the photographs, I only have three sets of these photographs, so I'm going to give one to Ed and give the colored photographs to the board. So, I'm driving in my car, I have a Nissan Altima, and I'm driving down Thayer Street, and the first photograph is a photograph of the street sign. And driving down Thayer Street, the second photograph, my car is in the road, there's no space for anyone else. The car, in front of my car, the dark black one, there is a car that's driving up Thayer as well. As this gentleman indicated, there are cars parked on the right side of Thayer. There's only space for one car to get up Thayer Street, as it is right now, and you can see where Thayer is in relation to that project. You can see the condition of the road, you can see the cars parked there, and the cars presumably are from people in the neighborhood that park, people who work in that area, I don't know, but that area is packed. If you move to the next photograph, you can see my car, you can sort of see the dash in the bottom of the photo, approaching the intersection of Thayer and Bridge in the bottom of the photo, approaching the intersection of Thayer and Bridge Street. And again, I am the only car, there's no space for another car to drive on Bridge Street. The next photograph is a photograph of, again, you can see my dash at the bottom of that photograph, and right across from my car is a car that had to pull over on Bridge Street because there was no space for that driver to make the turn on the Thayer Street, because I was in Thayer Street. So they had to pull over so that I would have room to turn right on Bridge Street, so that they then would be able to turn on the Thayer Street. The next photograph, I turned right on Bridge Street, you see this project that's just been built on the left-hand side, was at 999. Huge. Lots of people are going to be moving in there, lots of people who are going to want to park. So I'm driving down Bridge Street. Now, again, there's virtually no room for anyone else on Bridge Street except me, so I'm driving down Bridge. I turned around and drove up Bridge, and on the last photograph, you see the cars that are parked when I'm driving down Bridge, I first made that turn, you see the pickup truck on the right. When I turn around and come back, the last photograph are all the cars parked along Bridge Street. This is my mirror, side view mirror here. I'm driving back up Bridge Street. There's only one for me to drive up Bridge Street. All these other cars are parked, and they're parked on the sidewalk, or they're parked over the curb. I don't even know if there's a sidewalk there, it's too hard to tell. So where are these people going to drive? Never mind park. How are all of these people from 999 going to gain access and park in the building, presumably there's going to park in a parking lot under the building thing? And then these other people are going to drive, and these other people are going to park? I asked a question last time, and I never really got an answer. Are the people who rent in these dwellings going to have to pay extra to park? Maybe the parking's being provided, but on top of the rent they're going to pay, do they have to pay extra to park? I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that question, but we've had situations in Quincy where they've had to pay extra to park. They're not going to park underground, they're not going to park in the parking lots. These kids, because they are going to be young people, they're doing their best to pay their rent, plus pay their student loans. They're going to look for parking anywhere else, in neighborhoods, along Adams Street, in front of the National Park Service. So my point is that, I mean, I think that these photographs tell the story. When I originally heard about this project, I thought, oh, I know Bridge Street, I know that area. But you know what? I drove it. And I don't know if any of you have driven that in the last month and actually seen these conditions. And if you do, I don't see how anybody could possibly think that this project is an appropriate project for that location. It's just inconceivable to me that that would be the situation. An increased burden on the taxpayers, we're going to have to take care of this situation. All those people moving into these buildings are going to be banging at the door of the city, saying, take care of these roads, where are the sidewalks, we're going to walk on them, we're walking to the T. And who's going to have to put that bill? Us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out in this picture, this car's parked, but there's a sign that clearly states, no parking anytime. So I think enforcement is going to be a big part of all development.
Good evening, Marla Faris, Wardmont City Councilor. While I appreciate that this applicant has been before you since August, I have been working on this project with this applicant from early summer, and previously, an application before you, so we've worked on this project while we're in here at this address, right, the initial filing. We've had multiple meetings, and I want to thank you all for your work on this project, as well as Mr. Fatsies and Mr. Stevens, and the neighbors for taking the time to give their input, to make changes in this project, people that. I think it's different, as you're hearing, about what's allowed per busy zoning, the highest density zoning district that we have in Quincy is a parcel of 2331 First Street, and understanding what's allowed by rights, and how the residential use is a lesser, and that's the neighborhood. If you have frustrations, you cannot get a parking spot on Thayer Street, it's happening on a Tuesday, it's a problem that's in the neighborhood. By all means, anybody driving down there sees violation, 617-479-1212, QPD 247-365, they're glad to come and respond, call them. It isn't helpful to us to hear it after the fact, if you see violation, call it in, that's what we have, you know, one of the resources that the Quincy Police Department have. So it's definitely an area of enforcement, it's something we hear them at, everything in there, but what this project is for the specific access, as you understand, what's before us. The one thing I do want to give compliments to is this development team. They've worked on a lot of projects in my district every single time. They've come out with what a project is, they've followed through, met their guidelines, and done quality projects, and quality work with local contractors, and I truly appreciate that, because we have not had the same with other cases. This before you for Gilson Road and Johnson Ave, if you recollect, it's the worst blight in the city of Quincy that's still standing. So kudos to the development team for putting so much together, for their patience and understanding as you run through the neighborhood concerns. So thank you for your time.
So I got a chance to preview this as being a member of the Hospital Hill Neighborhood Association, and I was here last night as well with the zoning committee, and I do also want to thank the development team for their open ears and modifications they made. The point I'd like to make tonight is that this strikes me as a process that has been very pieced up, that I think you can look at a map here of this general area that runs through Furnace Brook, down Newport, down Hancock Street, and takes into where the Woodward School and the Historical Society are, and see an incredible opportunity for the city. As someone who lives within walking distance of space, there's a tremendous opportunity here to have an integrated, commercial, residential, real cityscape with walkable mix of things. My concern is that we will go one project at a time, and we'll end up with a jumble of buildings with no cityscape at all. This building, while very attractive in its design overall, it will have an entire first floor dedicated to cars, as will the projects around it. So right now, I'm concerned that we've seen three very high-end projects developed in a very small area right here, none of them appeared mean, I mean, be wrong, but none appeared mean, to be integrated together in any way. And I think that's reflected in the parking and the traffic concerns raised tonight. No one seems to have thought long-term about what to do about Bridge Street with Thayer Street, or the intersection with Adams, Hancock, or Newport Avenue. The intersection where Bridge Street reaches Bridge, where Adam reaches Newport, is already a disastrous intersection. It is very busy, potentially in summer, there's a lot of pedestrians, and now we'll have more. It's not great, and it needs improvement, but that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about one piece of the project. So it's probably not the exact form for this, but it seems like the right moment to raise to the right group, to the planning group, thinking about developments in these areas, about how we can improve or integrate anything of these kind of projects, and maximize the interest that the developers are starting to take in building projects here, and have some talent for future thoughtful development. I think if you don't, I think we're going to have the same concerns raised, the same problems raised, the same parking issues, and the same traffic issues, and they get worse and worse and worse. So with that said, I do thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Well, thank you for this opportunity to be before you again, and it has been some time, and at the last meeting, a councilor informed me, and I've known it for several years, and we've worked together in Quincy, and, you know, he said, sooner or later, we have to make a decision. And I thought, yes, it's easy to make a decision, but it's making the right decision, and it's having to consider the opportunities and options available for the long term, so that it isn't something that's quick, because a quick decision would be the preferred alternative to do nothing, to keep it as it is, or to look at the historical integrity. So knowing that there are regulations and rights within property, zoning, and what have you, how can we make this right for the community? What's the best thing to do? It's like having Cigars glass slipper. How does it fit, you know, in size, and how does it fit into this space where it is? And I think Alex Stefan brought up a good point about the fact that, what is the big long-term picture? What else is going to happen in that area? And how can we develop it as a whole? And how can we look at Freedom Park, and how it can integrate into a promenade that reaches out to Adams Green, so people feel comfortable in their space in their community? The Adams National Historical Park could end up being an attractive nuisance. Somebody talked about safety, somebody talked about traffic. What do we do with 60-plus people, probably 120 people, plus triple-nine, more people, and they want to visit a park? We need to figure out how those people are going to get across the street and be safe, because that's a hard one, let's face it. So the long term, what are we doing for transportation? What are we doing for zipcars? What are we doing for bike, you know, bike rentals available to the community of our business? What are we doing about pets? You know, I'm actually thinking about, you know, if pets are allowed, we have 60 units, we might have 60 dogs or 60 pets to walk twice a day, which is 120... Listen, where are they going to walk to? You know, is there a dog park? No, because there is a national park, so how is that going to affect the national park? So we need to be aware of those things, you know, as we introduce new life to a community of complexity. We all know about the traffic. I think everybody here is contributing to a greater whole. I think we want it to work, you know, we want to do the right thing. I've worked with an organization that is remarkable, with their patience, they're willing to work with us. How do we make it fit so it doesn't look temporary, you know, that it looks like it belongs there? And I think Boston Properties is sensitive to that. We have come up with a list, working with the Hospital Hill Association, who have been very attentive, wanting to improve their community, or working with groups, and so the list I'm leaving with you today is an indication of our concerns and what we would like to see out of this project. And the design is critical, it's a very beautiful building, but remember the glass slipper, you know? How is it fitting into the space? And there are ways, and Boston Properties is very sensitive to that, as to how they can configure the architecture so that it blends with the historic across the street, so that they are attractive, you know, and they look like they belong. So, you know, it has been quite an experience. I just feel that if it is to be, let it be the best it can be, so that we all benefit. And we're inviting people into our community, and what we provide for them, such as Freedom Park, and the promenade, and the Marshall Retail, you know, what is the bigger picture? So I look forward to working with the city and with Boston Properties, so that the end decision is one we're all happy and can celebrate.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
My name's Amelia Finney, I'm not a Quincy resident, but I'm the business representative for the carpenters in Quincy, so I represent hundreds of carpenters who live in Quincy. I just want to, I'll be brief. Boston Property Development also did a building in front of this property at 999 Hancock Street, and I just kind of want to bring it to your attention, you know, sometimes we overlook the contractors that are used on these projects. And on that particular project at 999 Hancock Street, I had several workers who came to me because they hadn't gotten paid on the project. They, since then, to my knowledge, have gotten paid. We went and filed a mechanic's lien on the project, and the workers were paid. But that just represents a very small handful of workers there who may have also been victims of wage theft on the project. Currently, I know, right now, the city doesn't have much of a way of regulating that, and you're working on that, the city council has been working on that. And I just want to make us all aware, because these are jobs that could be gainful employment for local skilled tradesmen and women. I'm not talking whether they're union or not, but just people getting paid for the work they do, which everybody deserves. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to come up?
I was complaining on the subcontractor not getting paid. We had a subcontractor that we paid, he had...
Say your name, please.
I'm sorry. You were laughing, thanks for your time tonight, much appreciated. I just want to elaborate on what you said, because we always pay our guys. We had a subcontractor that we had paid that hadn't paid one of his subcontractors. His subcontractor put a lien on the property, so I just want to make sure that we didn't get tied into that without further clarification. We ended up paying his subcontractors for him to remove the lien, and now we're working with him to get him to pay us back. That's what happened at this one.
So he paid a direct payment?
Say again?
Did a direct payment.
Well, we paid him for the work, and then we additionally paid a subcontractor who he didn't pay, and now he's on a payment plan to pay us back. But, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a just quick question for Mr. Fleming. You mentioned earlier about the historical commission, I missed what you said, was it the Mass Historical Commission?
No, the Quincy Historical.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll meet with them. Because there were so many design changes being discussed with the National Park Service, we didn't have a complete and final plan until recently, until this filing. So it was in December when we made the final revised plan, and I made an application at that time to then share the final design plan with them, so that they could comment on that plan. However, they didn't meet in December, so we'll be meeting at that project on January 23rd, and we understand that any decision of this order will be subject to their final recommendations that they will...
So the Mass Historical Commission doesn't have jurisdiction?
Massachusetts, just the...
Thanks.
Just for clarification, it's the Historic District Commission, not the Historical Commission.
Okay.
Again, third and last time, no one else, anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
Jim Nichols from Butler Road 286. Was a question ever answered about, is the parking paid included in the rent?
No.
That was not answered. That's going to be my bone of contention, because I think we have an issue with the Hamilton Executive House, where it's a paid parking, I think it's $75 a month, and with the benefit, or the people that avoid paying that parking fee, park on the area streets. I'm on Butler Road, so I see it's the end of Butler Road near the central, throughout the Quincy house, and from what I understand, it happens in all the other neighborhoods, including the neighborhoods behind here, so I have a tremendous problem with parking not being, you have adequate parking, but if people are going to pay it, they're paying $22, $2300 a month rent, and they can save $75 or $100, they're going to do it, and that's the issue that I have. Because we're getting inundated with the apartments that are on this area, and the new building, and the sample's not even on board, but I think they have adequate parking, I'm sure they're going to park there, but that's an issue that I wish could be answered, because it's not enforced, and it's being abused right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Texting the captain for enforcement, and any of you parking on the street right now, move your cars.
Third and last time, come on up, Mary Ann.
Is it possible, I don't see why it wouldn't be possible to include the parking fee within the rental fee, so that they're paying one flat fee and they have insured space. We have a trolley transportation system that we run for thousands of visitors, and if we charged the visitor to ride the trolley, we would have nobody riding the trolley. They would refuse to pay, they'd take their own car. So as a result, we have the trolley fee within the ticket price, and therefore, we have thousands of visitors who get... of visitors who get on the trolley and leave their car in the parking garage, and that takes thousands of cars off of the city streets. So I advocate for incorporating that because people will feel they're getting something for nothing, even though they aren't.
Thank you. I'll try it again. Third and last time, anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, I have a motion to close the public hearing. Someone? Oh, yeah, the planning director reminds me. Anyone who hasn't spoken or wishes to be recorded in favor and opposition, lift sheets over on the side on the windowsill. I'm sorry. Okay, was a motion, was there a second? Close the public hearing? Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Mr. Stevens?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board members. Just for the record, I want to note that Superintendent Marion Peak did supply this board with a letter tonight. I marked that as Exhibit 1 and it'd be included with the record for this case. And the photos that were submitted by the resident, those are Exhibit 2, and those will also go in the case file for this case. I believe with all the testimony given, I have prepared a affirmative recommendation to approve this project. Be more than happy to read the conditions for approval. Okay, the department recommends that the board vote to approve the site plan review in accordance with the Quincy Center of Zoning Ordinance, Section 9.5.1, and issue a special permit under Section 5.1.17, parking waiver subject to the following special conditions. The applicant is subject to the City of Quincy Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance and shall be responsible for adhering to the decision of the Quincy Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee for this project. Number two, the applicant shall appear before the city's Historic District Commission and shall be responsible for adhering to the decision of the commission for this project. The applicant shall continue to work with the National Park Service during this effort. Number three, the applicant shall continue to work with the MBTA to ensure that the construction of the proposed building along the MBTA red line tracks does not interfere or adversely impact the operation of the line. Number four, the applicant shall adhere to all comment letters issued by the city department's NP review consultants, including the Inspectional Services Department Review Letter dated October 19th, 2016, the Health Department Review Letter dated October 17th, 2016, regarding stormwater operation and maintenance, rodent control, environmental control, and demolition, the Department of Public Works Review Letter dated December 13th, 2016, the city's engineering peer review consultant Beals and Thomas Review Letter dated January 10th, 2017, the city's traffic peer review consultant Vaness and Associates Review Letter dated December 12th, 2016, and the city's traffic engineer letter dated January 11th, 2017. Number five, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall provide the planning department with a fully executed lease agreement, which shall provide for the exclusive use of seven parking spaces on the property known as Seventh Thayer Street for a period of five years. Upon the expiration of the five years, the planning department will review the use of these spaces and determine whether an additional time is needed for the use of that parking spaces. If the planning department determines that there is continued need for these spaces, the applicant will forthwith provide the department with an executed five-year extension of that lease. Number six, the applicant shall submit to the Director of Inspectional Services a copy of the revised stormwater plans that are part of this decision to determine whether the Order of Conditions, DEP number 059-1378, issued by the Conservation Commission on September 7th, 2016, needs to be amended. Number seven, the applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number eight, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the Inspectional Services Department at the time a demolition permit and the building permit application is filed. Number nine, the applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number 10, the applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on-site, which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. Said rodent control company, I'm sorry, said rodent control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review prior to obtaining their building permits. Number 11, upon completion of construction and prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide the city with a check in the amount of $25,000 to be used for roadway improvements. Number 12, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the planning department and city engineering office the digital file asbill plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and right-of-way. Number 13, the hours for construction activities and delivery of materials will be as follows: 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, and all construction and deliveries shall be prohibited on Sunday unless same are approved by the Chief of Police for Sunday activity. That would be the conclusion of my recommendations.
Board members, any questions?
I have a question, I have a comment, though. Before we take our vote, I just want to know that I'm against this project. I think it's way too dense for this street. The roadways, as mentioned earlier, in one way, I think that needs to be addressed before we approve the 60-year development on that street.
Any other comments on board? The only thing I would add is under Condition 5, where you remove the fully leased, executed lease agreement, I would ask that that be attached to the decision. So then, when it gets recorded, it's part of it. Okay, members have heard the department's recommendation. I'll ask again. Is there a motion? Hearing none. We will vote to continue it. There's no motion.
Motion to continue February 8.
February 8. Okay, motion. Motion's been made to continue it to February 8. Is there a second? Discussion, all those in favor? The next item is the 151 Hancock Street. I'll take a brief recess so we give everybody an opportunity and then the applicant can John, get that off.
Ask you an easy question?
Yeah.
Are we going to have time to do this one?